I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting today. I'm sure it will be very successful and impactful. I'd like to thank Riviera, Chairperson Mel Anderson, and her contingent for attending. And I guess at this point, I've been told to hand it off to our moderator, who is over there. Okay. Thank you. Gary Hines. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is Gary Hines. I'm Senior Vice President with the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County. Everybody knows us simply as the BDB. Our mission is threefold: recruitment, expansion, and retention of companies and jobs in Palm Beach County. We've just finished our fiscal year and was one of our better years. All right, but the matter at hand is the discussion tonight between these two August bodies, and let me kick that off. We're gathered here this evening to give both the Port of Palm Beach District Commissioners and the City of Riviera Beach Council an opportunity to meet each other and begin discussing topics that impact both parties, including the interlocal agreement between the port and the City of Riviera Beach, the port's stormwater drainage system, and the current status of Pinot Island. So those are the three main topics of discussion for tonight. I've been given two key jobs. One is the start is on time, and number two is the finish is on time. So if you get too verbose, I may ask you to sit down or curtail your comments. So bear with me on that. We're hopeful today, this evening, that this will start work to establish a platform to open dialogue between both parties, City Riviera Beach and Port of Palm Beach Commission. Please keep in mind, this is very important, please keep in mind that the agenda items are for discussion only; there'll be no voting tonight. And as the members of the public here, at the very end of the program, there will be a few minutes for questions, and we ask that if you have a question for either group, make sure you fill out a comment card. And we will limit those to, I believe, three minutes. All right, let me start by introducing our honored guests around the table tonight. Let me start by introducing the key elected officials and the key executive leaders, starting with the Port Commission. And raise your hands so people recognize who you are as I call out your name. Representing the Port Commission, we have Chair Catherine Waldron, Vice Chair Wayne Richards, Secretary/Treasurer Joseph Anderson, Port Commissioner Dr. Gene Enright, and Port Commissioner Blair Sickman. Also present is Port Executive Director Manuel Amira. Thank you for being here. With Riviera Beach City Council, we have Mayor Ronnie Felder. Good evening. Chairperson Keshambra Miller Anderson, Chair Pro Tem Dr. Julia Botell, Councilwoman Tridric McCoy, Councilwoman Shirley Lanier, Councilwoman Douglas Lawson, and City Manager Jonathan Evans. Good evening to all of you, and thank you for being here this evening. I think this is a great occasion and a great start to what would become an ongoing dialogue between the two bodies. Of course, we'll start tonight's joint workshop with a presentation from the port, and Carl Baker, who is the Ports Director of Plan and Development, will present that presentation. Carl?
Good evening, all, to the City Council. Welcome to the Port of Palm Beach Commissioners. I'm going to give you just a quick overview of, and a reminder of some of the things that goes on here at the port that's relevant for the discussion. Hundred and four years of economic development. This right here creates jobs and economic opportunity. That is essentially our motto here, what we do at the port. You can see on the cargo side, we've got over 2,800 direct jobs. There's over $300 million going into the local state business revenue. There's another 6,000 jobs associated with the importers and exporters using the port. And we're not talking about the people who are making coffee for the truck drivers that are coming here. We're talking about the people that are actually engaged in moving goods into the port. So totaled out, we've got almost 9,000 jobs that are associated with the port. On the cruise side, we've got over 1,300 direct jobs. Most of those are on the cruise ship, and while they don't actually, they live on the cruise ship, they're spending their money in Riviera Beach. You'll see them walking up and down the street. They're going to Walgreens. They're going to Walmart. They're buying stuff. They're spending their money in the city. And again, we've got over 463,000 passengers coming through the port last year, and unlike, say, Port Everglades and Port of Miami, which are fly-to markets, where you come into the airport, you get on a bus, you go to the port, go on your cruise, get on a bus, go back to the airport, and you never touch the ground in the local city, here the predominant market is a drive-to market. So these people are coming in and stopping in Riviera Beach or Singer Island and going to the restaurants along the way. Eighty-nine percent of the direct jobs are held by residents in Palm Beach County. Twenty percent are held by residents of West Palm Beach. We've got another 10%, or approximately 280 of our employees, or employees that work on the port, live in Riviera Beach. And while the Port Authority has 55 employees, six of whom live in Riviera Beach, which includes two of our port commissioners. Again, 463,000 passengers for a drive-to market, and they're coming from essentially everywhere on the eastern side of the United States and Canada to get here. For numbers, over 292,000 20-foot containers came through the port last year, which made us the fourth busiest container port in Florida out of 15 ports, and that makes us the 18th busiest container port in the United States. We moved over $5.3 billion worth of goods through the port, and we did it all in 165 acres. And as a point of reference, Port of Miami, which is an island, is 965 acres. Port Everglades is 1,790. So, and Tampa is 5,000 acres. So as ports go, we're very small, but we're punching way above our weight. Our cargo is predominantly going into the Caribbean. You can see almost $3.3 billion worth of goods is going into the Caribbean, of which over $1 billion is back and forth from the Bahamas. Again, for other products, we've got a lot of sugar barges that are moving out of here, and by putting that sugar on barges, we're not using 10,000 rail cars going up and down the I-95 corridor, and we're, or we're not using 39,000 trucks on I-95 to get that sugar to New York. Your liquid asphalt, this is where your roads are coming from. On the environmental side, the port is a lot greener than a lot of people give us credit for. We've had a master drainage permit from Florida Department of Environmental Protection for a long time, and back in, all the way back in 2002, we got an award for stormwater runoff management, which means we've been doing this for a long time. This is not something where we just got religion. We've got trench drains on all the new sections of the dock. They filter and redirect the stormwater runoff. And when you're doing these, there's a requirement through FDEP that if you have a certain amount of linear trench drain, you've got to have so many square feet of filtration system. All of these ones that we've put in, we've taken that number and multiplied it by two. So we have double the filtration that is required by FDEP. Coral, between our Slip 3, Birth 17, and Birth 1 projects, we've had over 1,000 corals relocated out to a coral nursery off of the Breakers. Couple of other things that we've done here. For Riviera Beach, between 2011 and last year, we've provided Riviera Beach Police Department with over $1,400,000 in security, and shot spotters, ballistic shields, body cameras, license plate readers, et cetera. Also, going back a little farther, we were responsible for paying for 13th Street. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. I would like to add something to that presentation. Great presentation, but this is a factoid that maybe many people don't know in this room. This port is one of the very few ports in the country that is a net exporting port. That means that more product goes outside this, out of this port to other markets, meaning revenue comes in. To the contrary, most ports around the country, they import product and they send dollars out. So kudos to this port. One other thing, based on the criteria that ranks the efficiency of ports, this port is the most efficient port in the United States. If one of you knew that about your home port, but kudos to the port. And I think the Port Executive Director is going to make some comments.
I am, and I thank you, Gary. First of all, welcome to all, including our illustrious guests out there. I can't see you, but you might be able to see my presentation. In the agenda, the next topic is the interlocal agreement. And, there it is. So, back in November of 1996, the city and the port entered into an interlocal agreement. On June 9th, 2015, a special joint workshop was held between the city and the port to discuss the revision to the interlocal agreement. In June, and October of 2016, port and city staff met jointly to further discuss a draft revision to the interlocal agreement. And a significant amount of time has passed since 2015 special joint workshop. We could sit here and most likely will now be able to finish the interlocal agreement if we were to take it section by section. So with that said, it is my recommendation that each respective entity, separately and officially, direct their appropriate staff to meet jointly in preparation of a mutually acceptable draft of a new interlocal agreement. That would also include, of course, our attorneys. We can provide the update on legislative intent, update on recognition of portland use and permitted uses, process of both upland buildings and waterside construction permitting and fees, mutual benefit recognition of city and port services provided by and to each other, and update recognition of the port and the city CRA relationship. So again, to my elected officials, it is my recommendation that we move forward, staff to get together and start to dissect and see what better product we can come up with. I realize that we cannot vote, but that is my strongest recommendation. We can discuss if you wish. Are there any discussions, any points, any questions that you may have?
I'll jump in. Manny, that sounds reasonable. My suggestion would be that we set a timeframe. I wouldn't want us to simply say, please, go back and meet with their staff and take three or four or five months, but let's set a reasonable timeframe to come back to each body. Would 60 or 90 days be sufficient? I would hope 60 to 90 would be sufficient.
Are you saying to come back with recommendations?
Yes. Recommendations that each body would then discuss, and then we would wrap it up hopefully with an agreement. I would support that.
Do you guys have any thoughts about that?
Jonathan?
Yes. Well, my thought process would be that we have a workshop this week, Saturday, where we could actually give a more accurate timeframe after we meet as a council, and then we can determine if that 30 or 60 days, or even 90 days, would be sufficient for us. So after Saturday, we'd be able to give some direction to you and our city manager and let you know when we can move forward with that.
Okay. I think that'd be great.
That'll be fine.
That'll work. Definitely. We look forward to it.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair. So Mr. Amira, is there any specific points that you want to share with us? Because, you know, we only took office in April. Is there anything but, in general, that you want to point to out of the current agreement that you're looking at proposing to be modified?
Sure. I think the first one would certainly be, laws have changed as it pertains to permitting. That would be the first issue that we would like to tackle. Secondly, of course, is there is a provision that, and it's somewhat confusion, but still a provision, that in general, it just basically says, "We cannot expand north." Well, that's not necessarily correct. Therefore, we would like to be able to come create better language, a much more usable language, user-friendly type language, that would allow us to, in fact, proceed and expand the port. There is a rule of thumb in ports. If you don't move forward with expansion, you're forced to go backwards. And we don't want that. We don't want that for the city, and we certainly do not want that for the port. And there are other provisions that I think it behooves all of us to specifically look at and see if the language is up to date with legislative issues and/or better use of the language.
Mr. Amira, you said it's not correct. What part is that? That's not correct?
Well, I wouldn't say it's not correct, but in the interlocal agreement, it says, "We cannot go beyond 10th Street." I believe that's what it says. That, while it's perfectly clear that we should not go beyond 10th Street, it doesn't mean that we cannot purchase land above 10th Street and be able to use it as it is zoned. So that's, again, this one type of clarification that we'd like to bring back to all of the elected officials.
Hello?
I think it's on.
And I guess what he's talking about is, if you look at page three of the interlocal agreement, right there where it says port expansion. But I think one of the things we need to be cognizant of, if we start to look at, for example, Cracker Boy, that's directly to the north of us, don't know what the provisions of the family, or how long that will stay in existence, but at least having, you know, first right of refusal in order to look at the procurement of that land or the leasing of that land. And long-term, we have the CRA, and I know the CRA projects that are coming down the pipe, whether it's a parking garage. So trying to be good neighbors, and we have the land that's across the street, which Mr., I can't think of his name, but he owns that land across the street.
Clorj?
Yeah. Raphael. And I think he wants a pretty good penny. But these are areas that, you know, if we can get a business in that will do import-export, will only be beneficial to the both of us. As you know, we have the one business that is coming next to the Tropical and between Stony Brooks, if we can get that off. And, you know, just working in collaboration with the Business Development Board, also North Palm East Chamber, to attract businesses here that will do port. And if you remember, along 13th Street, many years ago, most of that was occupied by individuals that did and utilized that rail. Currently, where your building is right now, you had businesses that did the import and export of, you gotta think it was Budweiser, oh, I'm not sure, but you had Canada Dry, and many of those businesses are behind 13th Street that utilize the port. So looking, identifying those lands, and then working together at looking to bring in businesses that may be utilized or best suited for that area. So, you know, unfortunately, we can't expand, but like he said, these are some options down the road. If it came available, we want to be able to have that flexibility.
I just want to make one comment. Because they're new council members, I, they're just five pages, but there's a lot in these five pages. And this cannot be done overnight. I mean, for the City of Riviera Beach, the new city manager, the new attorney here, and the members. And my suggestion would be that you have a workshop and take each line, take each section one by one, and have your attorney involved, because there are a lot of legal terms that are in this agreement. And I'm not an attorney, and a lot of you are not either, so I just think that we need to do it right. And as the city make adjustments to a section, I then think the city needs to, along with their manager and attorney, then needs to, the council meet, decide section by section. Then I would like to see, I think that you all should then send it back to the port, to our staff, let them look over it, and then backwards and forth until we have an idea of what we're doing. Because this legal document is a heavy hitter. It's not what some of you might think. And I want us to be able to continue to work together to be one group, the city along with the port, hand in hand. So that's just a comment in how we should proceed.
I think you said you're going to get us a timeline. Maybe when you're having that discussion, if there's any key issues that you have concerns about, you could also provide those to us, too, so that we could begin to work on them on our side, too, I think. And thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I think you hit it perfectly on how we need to expand and where we can do it. So that's important.
Madam Chair, I believe that Jonathan?
Sorry, yes.
Madam Chair, and members of the board, one thing that we can certainly do from the staff stand is that you do have a workshop that is scheduled for Saturday, but we have the opportunity to schedule subsequent workshops, and we were looking to schedule a workshop in November and get a date from the council. So we can put that as an item discussion on the agreement, and that would give staff an opportunity at least three weeks to work with port staff to see if there are any hot button issues or any areas where we need some clarity, and then get a direction from the board, and then come back. And another opportunity for a joint meeting to speak in more specificity after staff clears up some of the language and provides some, and get some direction from the council. So we can definitely do that at your workshop in November, but we can get some perspective from the board. Because I would envision that your meeting on Saturday, you would authorize us to send a letter to the port to say, "We will commence the conversation at the staff level for the purposes of offering some recommendations for both groups to consider at a later date."
Sounds good. Anything else?
Mr. Larson? Oh, good. All right. Well, this brings us up to the next topic, and that would be stormwater drainage. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to our engineer by the name of Ron, Ron Covington, who's been here now for less than a month. So go easy on him.
Welcome, Commissioners. I hope to give you some information, just for some discussion and cooperation. I've been here a month. I bring over 30 years' experience in port infrastructure and port utilities. So we're here to talk about drainage issues. You can see the, this is the boundary line of our port, and I'll give you a little scope on that. All that drainage goes into our intercoastal waterway, and the port provides for the permitting through the NPDES permit process and FDEP administered processes. The area outside of the port to the north, which encompasses most of Cracker Boy Marina, drains into our area through the outfall that dumps, or that discharges into Slip 1. And that is all taken care of by the port. The next couple of areas bring in residential areas. The area to the north of the Port North property line, up to 11th Street, also drains in to our main drainage line, our 66-inch line that runs through the center of the port, our main artery. And also, you can see, we pick up that residential area west of Barack Obama Highway, which is greater than half the area of our port. So we bring quite a bit of the drainage, take care of quite a bit of the drainage from Riviera Beach. To the south, we pick up a small area of Palm Beach in the Skyway Overpass, and that area also drains in to the port between Slips 2 and 3. The port pays $68,606 per year in stormwater drainage charges to the City of Riviera Beach. In addition, by our own permitting, which is not part of your permitting, the port is legally required to have quarterly stormwater quality inspections, and we spend approximately $24,000 a year on that testing. In addition to that, we spend about $6,000 a year to clean up our storm drains and catch basins and the trench drains, which are the pollution-retard basins that Carl spoke of. Despite that, in the 2007 report that was done by the City of Riviera Beach, you did have a stormwater management technical advisory committee, which did not include a representative or input from the port. Participation in the City of Riviera Beach user fee credit process, which you have in your ordinance, has never been made available to the port. Be glad to answer any questions or help with any discussion.
Could someone provide a little more information regarding the two bulleted items that you spoke of? I don't know if that would come from our side or from the port's side regarding the, just a little background information on those.
The items specific to the annual fee that's collected for the...
No, go back to the...
Oh, the technical advisory.
The technical advisory committee and the user fee credit process.
I would have to do some additional research on that from the staff standpoint. To my knowledge, those two statements are accurate. I know that one thing that the board would have to consider, if there was any type of discussion with regards to concession or credits in regards to the stormwater fee and how it's calculated, we're going to have to look at the ordinance, because it is adopted by ordinance. So it would require two readings. So staff would have to look at the process that we did go through for the stormwater, the collection of the stormwater fee, and then if there's any desires from the board to make modifications, and then look to address those specific aspects. Because if it is a matter of adding someone to that technical review, I think that particular process, unless the board is going through the process of looking at the stormwater fee again, that that may be a closed-out process to where that committee is effectively not up and operational at this time.
That was from your 2007 report. The technical advisory committee assisted in that report with your consultant.
So there is no technical advisory committee anymore?
At this particular moment, I think when a government entity goes through the purpose, the process of effectively levying an assessment, that is part of the mechanism that has to be in place. But now that it's already adopted, that it is basically a defunct or is a decommissioned committee. Now, in the event that the board wanted to look at our stormwater fees and how it's collected, et cetera, which is, this is something that is on the horizon for staff, certainly that would be a component to make sure that somebody from the port, if the port's pleasure to act on that, in that capacity, to assist on the technical review process.
Okay. And then the user fee credit process, they said participation was not allowed for.
And I would have to seek clarification from the port if there was any application. Did the city ever effectuate a application process, or was there any? I know there's been correspondence back and forth to the city with regards to the fee and those types of things, but I didn't know if there was any application process that staff communicated to the port with regards to this particular item.
Not that I'm aware of. I do know that we did have some communication...
Interchange and communication as it relates to the water fee, but not the stormwater. So more than welcome to sit down. It looks like we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us. And that's okay. That's what we're here for. No problem.
One of the things also, I think, that's germane to the conversation in my discussions with the executive director, was the issue with regards to the maintenance of that piece of infrastructure. And in the event that there is a failure, you don't have the luxury of waiting for us to come in and maintain. Could you speak to that? Because I think it provides some perspective to the elected officials on how important this issue is.
Absolutely. Sure. Can you go back to where you have all the stormwater? Let's see. Right there, yes, right there. See how I can best describe this? You have Riviera Beach Heights, then if you go across the Obama Highway, and then the next red area, then you'll see a blue line that just connects to our main line. At the intersection of that smaller line, where it actually touches the main line, we have always had some kind of a failure at that point. Now, granted, we do have a lot of heavy trucks transporting it, a lot...
of infrastructure, and in the event that there is a failure, you don't have the luxury of waiting for us to come in and maintain. Could you speak to that, 'cause I think it provides some perspective to the elected officials on how important this issue is.
Absolutely, sure. Can you go back to where you have all the stormwater? Let's see, right there, yes, right there. See how I can best describe this? You have the Riviera Beach Heights, then if you go across the, um, Obama Highway, and then the next red area, then you'll see a, a blue line that just connects to our main line. At the intersection of that smaller line where it actually touches the main line, we have always had some kind of a failure at that point. Now, granted, we do have a lot of heavy trucks transporting it, a lot of heavy cargo, particularly refrigerated, as it relates to what we call emergency exports. In that corner, however, again, there is a tremendous amount of failure. And as you correctly stated, Jonathan, we don't have the luxury of having to sit around, we, that has to be fixed, and I can and we will provide you with, when was the last time we had to go ahead and do an emergency, um, repair? Uh, it happens, and it happens quite frequently. Primarily, this really not a particular time in, during the year, 'cause I was gonna say perhaps it's related to the, when it rains a lot, but no, it's just, it's, it's almost a, uh, I, I couldn't even begin to tell you why that is happening, but that's one of the main problems that we do face. Now, the main line, as you can see, that goes from west to east, uh, that is directly underneath our entrance to the port. We cannot afford a failure there, because then we would really basically have to reroute the traffic, and now nobody wins at that point, particularly the citizens of, uh, this, that live in the city of Riviera Beach. So I hope that at least that's one little minor illustration, but a very important one for all of us, and then, again, it looks like we're gonna be sitting down and we're gonna be doing a lot of work.
I'll add to that, that in the month of September, we did make emergency repairs to the inverted T in that main line.
Do you remember how much? 'Cause I, I don't. How much it was?
No, I apologize, I know it was in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range, I believe.
Manny, is it that ultimately we're looking for some type of participation or credit or something from the city or reduction of the fee, is that where we're going ultimately?
I, I think that's a start, Commissioner.
Okay, it's okay to say that.
No, 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 and, and...
And possibly support with regard to maintenance, maintenance of that facility.
Okay, without a doubt.
Yes, that's, that's what we're looking for, thank you.
I'll, one final item for clarification, the first bullet point on this slide, that study that you did basically did not address anything that's happening in the port. That, the limits of the port were more or less excluded from that report, probably because of, of the consultant's direction that they were given.
Madam Chair?
Just wanna make, Wayne, tell me...
No.
He's turning it up as you talk.
I just wanna make, wanna comment that, um, the port makes sure that, um, we go through all the environmental standards when things go into the intercoastal waterway. And, uh, I've heard, you know, I live in the city too, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that you, that the city knew how much money and what we did as far as making sure that when something comes from, uh, any area of the city before it goes into the intercoastal, it goes through a lot of testing and a lot of procedures. Now, I know that if you just go down the intercoastal waterway and go up, I wonder about many of the businesses that are along the intercoastal, and many of the apartments or condos and things, because some days I see all kinds of stuff dumped into the intercoastal. And I really don't believe that they're meeting the standards, the environmental standards that are required to dump into the intercoastal, but I know the port of Palm Beach is, just from my observation, that's it.
Madam Chair, if I may also, and, um, there is nothing that, in, in my, um, review of the capital improvements plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four that contemplates a project to address any of the stormwater infrastructure that is in, on port property, or even for that matter, adjacent to port property. So when we do have that discussion, some things to think about is, in the event that you do have some failures or we plan out for long-time capital expenses, how effectively would we fund that? Is there an opportunity for a partnership or a program that was spoken to earlier about credit or what have you? Because one of the things that we're starting to see is, is more regulations from Tallahassee and the environmental, um, agencies, to where you're going to see a situation where stormwater is treated the same way water and wastewater is, and especially that we're adjacent to a water body illicit discharge and making sure we take all the contaminants out, so we can anticipate that stormwater restrictions are going to be a lot larger and more harsh for government entities and for the treatment process. So, the, the quicker we're able to solidify an arrangement as to what exactly we want to do between both parties, I think the better off we all are. But, um, there has not been anything, to my knowledge, and, and even in conversations with staff, that speaks to any capital investment or infrastructure repairs that are impacting the port, and, and obviously, it's impacting our community, 'cause a lot of the water does discharge through these outfalls into the, um, the stormwater treatment facilities they have.
Madam Chair?
So, from my understanding, is it the pleasure of the port commission that we revisit the technical advisory committee and then bring the port's input and recommendations in with that?
I don't, do you wanna, we institute it?
That, that'll be a good start, absolutely.
And, um, Madam Chair?
Um, just, uh, you know, and this is, uh, you know, a good dialogue, and, uh, like you say, you may not have this in your budget, but the port has been amenable, and we will continue until we get to that, you know, that fork in the road, that we can have these amenable, um, amenable conversations, but, uh, um, just keep in mind, we are, you know, front and center ahead of, you know, when it comes to stormwater and making sure our end is clean as well as serving the city, so we understand the limitations that you may have for this, you know, October 1st, tomorrow is a new budget year, and this is not something that you can just, you know, we wouldn't definitely want to have you going to contingency.
Um, Madam Chair, also, one of the things that is germane to this discussion is also our relationship with the school district as well, 'cause you have similar situations with school facilities throughout our community, so when we do look at the ordinance that establishes the stormwater rate, and then look at the process where the credits are established, that may be something that, in lieu of the payments that are received, as long as they are treating the water and they have appropriate infrastructure in place, that is where you can institute the credit program, but we can also do some additional research as to, it may not be something that we've ever put out, or entities may not know of it as to why they never applied for it. So we can do some research and then report back to the board accordingly.
Any final questions? Any final questions in this conversation? Okay, with that, let's move on to the seventy-five items and things, and then the current status of Peanut Island. Uh, at the, uh, mic is, is, uh, Director Secret Operations and Security Ken Hernan.
Good evening Commissioners and Councilmembers. To clarify properties that are owned by the Port of Palm Beach District, we went to the property appraiser's website and generated this map. Uh, this map reflects a total of eighty-nine point seven acres of upland and submerged lands, uh, that, properties that the port actually owns. The property in question, in, when we discuss, um, the Coast Guard Station at Peanut Island, is this area in red. It's approximately, excuse me, uh, three point four acres, uh, that are out there. That, this is where the Coast Guard House sits, the Boathouse sits, as well as the bunker for John F. Kennedy when he was alive. Uh, this lease was entered into, or the other properties that are owned, that are leased by the county, we have thirty-six acres along the east and, and south shoreline portions that are currently being used. This lease was entered into in nineteen ninety-four for thirty years, which will expire in twenty twenty-four, with one automatic twenty-five-year option taking it to twenty forty-nine, uh, absent any prior notification, uh, from the port. The current lease conditions, automatic renewal, sorry about that, current lease conditions are, uh, island ma, island master plan, a right to inspect by the port, and an operational plan, and annual meetings, development, status, and visitor use. We currently are receiving complaints in relation to some of the usage for the submerged land, where boats have moored out there and basically taken up residence, causing a little bit of a disturbance on the weekends. Uh, the port has been in discussions with the county and city staff to lease the property, again, that four point three acres of the Coast Guard Station. Uh, currently, Commissioners, at the August Board Meeting, set a sixty-day timer for proposals to be submitted by the city and the county to determine best possible uses if they were interested. This timer is set to expire on October seventeenth unless extended by the board. The county has elected not to participate, allowing the city the opportunity to review its options and wait, or wait for the sixty-day timer to run out. And that'll be questions.
Madam Chair and members of the board, um, as well as port commissioners, we've had the opportunity to enter into discussions with, uh, staff about the feasibility of the city of Riviera Beach being a partner in the restoration activities on the, with the bunker, as well as the Coast Guard Station. We, um, from the staff standpoint, believe that it is a very important asset to our community, and it has significant historical, um, value to Palm Beach County, as well as the state of Florida and the nation for that matter. Uh, City Attorney Winn and I have had the opportunity to speak with the county administrator concerning some of the conditions that are on the property with regards to activities. One of the challenges that the board would have to, um, understand, that in the event that we enter into an arrangement whereby we operate the, the facilities there and bring them up to code, is that you are limited to what activities can occur on that site. In addition to, there would be monies that would have to be expended for the purposes of a curator to help, um, book tours and those types of things. Also, we have to be conscientious of the neighboring communities that, um, would like to see the, um, island become something that causes a nuisance, they don't want to see that occur. So, whatever the stipulations are there from the county's standpoint, they're pretty, um, concrete, there may be some flexibility. From our standpoint, from staff, we do believe that there is a lot of value to being able to coordinate trips and activities, um, to see the, the historic site, as well as the opportunity to host weddings and certain activities, being conscientious of the times of operation, those types of things. Also, the cost that was provided to renovate the facilities, based on the, um, information that was provided, was roughly at about four point five million dollars, and that number, I believe, is, is dated, so it may need to be refreshed. I would anticipate that the cost to renovate the facilities and bring it up to a condition where you can open it up would be well over, uh, probably about six million dollars. Now, there is funding that is available through multiple agencies, whether it's, um, FIND, whether it's appropriations through the state, granting and philanthropic organizations, or, um, uh, historic preservation groups that may assist in the funding, but it is an understanding that, uh, there is substantial capital investment that would have to occur in order to bring this to a point where, um, it can be available for the use of the public. Uh, the, the island in itself, we would be partners with all the entities that are involved, so the port, obviously, the county, um, FIND, um, all would be partners in the management of the operation as far as the, as the island is concerned, but there is a lot of potential. Uh, we do believe that if the board is to consider making a push to, um, acquire, uh, this, this track to be able to move forward with renovations, that you consider some type of stipulations in the agreement, that, uh, we would not assume the responsibility of the, the property until the lease is set to effectively expire, but also that we commence the grant writing process immediately, so we can move forward with being able to secure some dollars or putting monies aside for, um, being able to be up and operational as quickly as possible. Now, understanding that any renovations that would have to occur would have to happen before you would occupy the, the site and the, when the lease is set to expire, so that would be some conversations that would need to be had with the port, and, and obviously with the county, is how we go through the permitting process, 'cause that is unincorporated Palm Beach County. Um, so from, from staff standpoint, obviously, we're gonna have a more in-depth discussion at your meeting on Saturday to speak about what proposal, um, the board would like to bring forward. My hope is to get direction from the council as to how you would like to proceed, and we would then draft, the attorney and I would draft a pretty, uh, clear and concise memorandum of understanding to the port, communicating what some of the intentions of the council are, but I would envision that the position, and when we created this position, the assistant to the city manager, this would be their project. This would be, they would be the point person for working with our lobbyists, working on solidifying grants, to move forward with that. Um, so, the city and our attorney and I have talked a little bit about some things that you may wanna incorporate in an agreement, and we can speak on more specificity, but we do believe that, um, this property deserves to be restored and considered as it is a showpiece here in Palm Beach County, and is, um, the gateway as you, as you enter our community. So, uh, staff stands prepared to answer any questions. Uh, Ms. Winn has also had an opportunity to take a look at some of the, the documents that are, uh, associated with this, as well as, uh, being in attendance at most of the meetings that we've had on this item.
Madam Chair, if you recall, this is, uh, worked for my friend, the city manager, one of the issues that also came up was the possibly, possibility of swapping land, a parcel of land that the port desperately needs, and I thought, or I think, that you are also going to incorporate that, is that, I'll be still in that frame of mind.
And, and that is one of the, the requests that was discussed at the original conversation, that the port really needed, um, parcels or tracts of land for the purposes of expanding port operations. So, with that list of properties that we did have, uh, that would be something that the board would consider as part of their retreat, so if they do say, "Hey, we would be interested in, um, looking to bring this to the table," um, that would be a policy decision that the board would make, but we would have those, um, parcels identified for discussion.
Alright. Again, uh, Madam Chair, if I may, um, not to add any additional pressure, but, October the seventeenth is two weeks away, thereabouts. Uh, I'm on the clock, as you can appreciate that, uh, on the seventeenth, obviously, I hope that we'll be able to work, so that I can bring it and present it. And I would like you to, extending you an invitation right now for you to join me during that meeting, so we can both make that presentation.
I would not rather be any other place, presenting that item.
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't know if the microphone's on or not, but, um, as most people know or might not know, that the county was basically the, uh, was the person or identity that was going to really take over Peanut Island and turn it into a, um, you know, spend X amount of dollars and it wouldn't be a problem. They're still willing, basically, if the city feels that the amount of money that they're gonna have to put out for this, they're still willing to come back into the, um, the program, and they would incorporate the city and the port, and turning this into something we all would be very proud of. Um, I'm just speaking as one port commissioner, but, um, I've been here a while, and my goal has always been to really turn this over to the county, or if the city finds they have the, um, the financial money, basically, to do this, um, that's fine also. But the county still, um, basically with all their grant writing and, and their expertise is something that I've always thought would happen. Of course, you're having a workshop on Saturday, and I'm sure you'll bring this up, but if the county does, um, take it over, they're not just gonna say, you know, "Sorry, port, sorry Riviera Beach." This is gonna be kind of a tri-party type of, uh, project, and I think we'd all be pretty proud of it. I mean, um, we're talking multi-millions of dollars to turn this into something that we'd all be proud of, so, that's just something that, as one port commissioner, I've never really been interested in expending millions of dollars on something that we really don't have any expertise in, in the county, obviously. We saw what they did on part of Peanut Island already, um, so that's just something to think about too. They're not gonna, you know, take it over and just say, you know, "Thanks Riviera, thanks port, but we're gonna do it ourselves." They've been more than willing to include us all in a, in a tri-party type of arrangement. They've been more than willing to include us all in a, in a tri-party type of arrangement.
Well, my understanding is the county's standing down on this, so my understanding is the county has formally stood down from pursuing Peanut Island. That's what I was.
The county is waiting until the sixty day period is up to see if the city is going to move forward, and so they're not negotiating right now, but if the city feels that the expenditure is not reasonable or too much, then the county would be back into the picture.
Madam Chair.
Point of clarification, because I think Mr. Pinsky was in most of those meetings, and I was under the same idea that the county didn't mind taking over, but they wanted more of a pristine, basically, the updates already to occur before, because they didn't have any money, or they didn't want it in the condition that they're in, but I guess maybe we could have Mr. Pinsky speak to that if, Mr. Heinz, that's okay? Hate to put him on the spot, but I just want, I know he attended a lot of those joint, those meetings that took place.
Commissioner, you're not putting me on the spot. Chairs, staff, commissioners, council members, Richard Pinsky, for the record, I do represent the Port of Palm Beach. Yes, the meetings that I attended, I think was pretty clear, and I think the, I think Director Almir communicated the same thing to the port commission, that the county's standpoint was they were not in a position to be putting out the funds to bring the Peanut Island infrastructure to a level that they were ready to take it over. They had requested that once the port restores Peanut Island, and that includes the Coast Guard Station and the Kennedy Bunker and the whatnot, then at that point, they would be willing to take over a lease from the Port of Palm Beach. When questioned about who would be the applicant for a grant, again, it was my understanding that the county said the port would be the applicant, although the county would help.
So, Madam Chair, I think it behooves us to make sure that we have that clear understanding, as well as who, whom the parties are going to be to go after those funds, maybe jointly or individually, but I wanted to make sure we got that clarification, because I wanted to make sure that the understanding from the county, as well as from the city, how that would work out.
As far as our concern, the county stood down, you guys expressed an interest, so we were hoping to look forward to seeing what you have since the seventeenth.
We talked to the county, we've talked to the county over the years about Peanut Island, and I know that there are a lot of stipulations they have as far as requirements, you can't do this or whatever, but as the Port of Palm Beach, I feel that we need to go back and revisit them, because there might be some things that the city might want to do and feel that they should be able to do in order to make it happen. And I think there are too many stipulations and requirements, and we're in, what, 2019? So some of those things were written up years and years ago, and they're outdated, and we have new technology, things are different now, so I think that we, as a port, in addition to the city, the city should just look at all different avenues and bring them to us, and we might, as the Port of Palm Beach commissioners, need to go back to the county and say, hey, we no longer want to do it this way, or maybe we need to change this and try to wriggle out some of the key points that might need to be eliminated from all these requirements, so that, not saying that we're not going to do things legally and environmentally and all those things, so that we can make this work, because our hands are tied in many things that some commissioners I knew, and county commissioners years ago, said they didn't feel that you should have this there or that there, and they fought, and things were by one vote, because I had a county commissioner tell me the other day from years ago, they didn't, she and he did not vote on that, because they thought that the site should be different, or maybe they can have a restaurant, not for someone to make a lot of money, but you know, for people who are going on tours like Art Commie and all of that, they have to have some kind of refreshments there for the people who are visiting, not just a big restaurant for somebody to get rich, but have something nice. So we might, you know, I think we need to look at what can happen today and kind of tweak and go through things. I think the city should have in mind that the sky's the limit, and don't, don't just say, hey, we cannot do this, because you don't know. This is my take.
Thank you. The port, as you know, our main function is to increase economic activity in the county and the region, so the operation of facilities at Peanut Island is not in our, in our wheelhouse, if you will, and that's why I and our board has been very receptive to finding another entity to take that over, so that's first and foremost. That's not what we do, we shouldn't be operating that. We need to bring more businesses here, create more jobs and opportunity. When Mr. Evans came forward and said the city was very interested, that triggered something in myself and most, many of us, because we want to partner with the city. We're in the city, you're right here, we want to work with the city. We want to find joint areas where we can grow and move forward. I understand the county's disappointed that we didn't just work with them, but they'll be okay. So I'm hopeful that the city can come up with a plan that makes sense for the city of Riviera Beach and its residents. I am not looking for economic benefit from this piece, this is not a financial windfall for us, and I would hope that my colleagues are not looking for that as well. I don't think we are. The goal is not to make money on a transfer or a long-term lease. The goal is to make sure that those facilities are properly cared for. We have a duty to make sure that they're taken care of, and we're going to meet that, and we know that you will as well. So sure, it'd be, it'll be very nice if there is a, if there's mutual benefit, but the main benefit that the port needs, in my mind, is to make sure that those facilities are preserved and cared for. It's not the bottom dollar, it's not the bottom line of the dollar. I'll make that very clear.
Commissioner Anderson.
And also, if we can just be cognizant, because I think nobody wants to look at the elephant in the room, but we have to also look at, is there some way we can put, you know, make sure that we can appease our neighbors over in Palm Beach, and I'm sure our Palm Beach Shore's representative, she's in board as well.
Madam Chair, if I may, to speak some of the, to the points that were made earlier, we see this the same way the port sees it, and it's very refreshing to hear that, you know, the motive is to really see this piece restored to its full grandeur, and we have an obligation to preserve history for the up and coming generations to be able to understand what our country was like then. From the city's standpoint, going back to when the issues were presented and the, the facility was in a state of disrepair and the, the facility was going to be closed, I don't believe there was any communications with the city at the opportunity to, is the county and the city willing to work together to make sure that this piece of history is preserved? And so from our standpoint as a city, if the board wishes to move in the direction to move, to get this facility restored back up and operational, one of the things certainly that we would like is the support from the port commission to advocate for some modifications, obviously being conscientious of our neighbors and having things, but if the board is going to say, move forward, and even in some cases may have to bring three or six million dollars to the table for the purposes of restoring that, it would be good to generate at least some revenue to offset some of the capital's costs where there is a reasonable repayment process, and that would only be fair in our perspective, that we're going to come to the table and say, we're willing to share in the risk with the understanding that there is going to be some consideration to make some modifications. So that really boils down to the task that would be on the elected officials in the room and staff to really work with the county to get us to a point where both parties may not love every element of the, the conditions, but at least can be understanding, and we see it as a great opportunity. We have a beautiful event center, you can have a wedding on an island, and we can shuttle you over to the, the event center. You don't have to fly out and go to the Caribbean, you have an island right here in our backyard, so what great potential do we have there? You know, if the board wants me to live on the island, I'll take one for the team. So, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to really bring this, this property back to life. It's only, only fair, and I think that, well, I know that there is a lot of other entities that would work with us, and certainly, we would leverage any relationship we have with our grant writer. We have a contract that all it requires is the board to take legislative action for us to piggyback the contract with the CRA for a grant writer, so we can have a grant writer focus on that. We're going to have a staff person managing this whole entire process, so it is a priority for us, and we see it as an important piece. So we're willing to be able to provide you all something in writing after I have, get direction from my board on the fifth of October.
Madam Chair, the expectations for the October seventeenth deadline is to have an understanding as to what the city would like to present in regards to this piece of land?
I think it's the proposal, or, I think the expectation is to have a formal proposal.
Okay. Now, to Commissioner Enright's points, this can be limited based on the current laws that are in place with the commission with this plot of land, so even if we do set some higher expectations and dreams of grandeur for, you know, bringing certain things there, we have to base it currently on what's in place.
But you could also have your ultimate vision in there, assuming, you know, we were able to work with you to get the modifications that are required and make it a success that...
And that's what I wanted to also make clear to my colleagues as well, that on this meeting, this workshop, we have two weeks to pretty much present a proposal, so our workshop is going to be vital to actually getting this back if we're really serious about moving forward as a city with acquiring this piece of land.
And to build on Councilman Lawson's perspective, is that I believe that the board's desire is really to see ecotourism be a major focus for us. I can tell you from, you know, the things that you read, everything is not referenced as Riviera Beach, you know, they talk about West Palm Beach and the aquatic life that's here and those types of things, and this is an opportunity for us to really promote ecotourism, to really get folks to enjoy the things that we have in our community, and really stake acclaim to be a tourist destination for ecotourism. So we don't have a vision of Ferris wheels on the island, we, we want to see your scuba divers and your snorkelers and your families out there and experiencing a little bit of history, but then getting to see one of the most unique ecosystems in the country or in the world for that matter.
I think, I thank you for that, I think you don't get any argument from us, everybody wants it to be a success, and Gary was telling me to wrap it up, so I guess unless somebody has something else.
And before we do that, just like to piggyback on something that Commissioner Wayne Richards mentioned, that's not our business, it's never been and probably never will be our business to, you know, farm entertainment, but cargo is, and with that, in order for you to move more cargo, we need more land, and I know it's been said before, it'll be a broken record, but that is something that we desperately could use, and that helps us all. We can all grow.
Thank you. Gary, do you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think coming into tonight's meeting, there is no expectation certainly that these three issues will be resolved tonight, but what an excellent start, and a strong communication, which will go on and continue in the weeks ahead. We did promise members of the public...
Just one more comment. Mr. Almir did want me to make sure that you were afforded an opportunity to go to Peanut Island to look at the properties, so at your leisure, just reach out, and we'll be more than happy to set up transportation.
So we have public comment now?
We have a few, we'll take them in order. We have two public comments on item one, one on item two, one on item three. The public, yeah, no more than three minutes for your comments. Gerald Ward, Gerald Ward...
Councilwoman Batel had something that she wanted to say, I cut her off.
One quick question, if I might.
Dr. Batel?
Are we aware of the land that you'd like to acquire? It was the single question that I had from someone with whom I sat at the recent League of Cities luncheon, and she said, I hear you're swapping land, and I said, I don't know anything about that, so I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about what the land is that you're interested in acquiring.
There isn't any, well, the closer to the port possible, but we have not identified, leaving that up to the city to come back to us with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward?
Good evening. Gerald Ward, 2135 Broadway, the great city of Riviera Beach. I obviously am old, but the interlocal agreement is a very important document that was very successful. The port came in with the Louise Bowie Skypass, and it was obvious that there needed to be some organization for a special district, subservient special district within the city. It's no different than one of your other districts that serves west of Military Trail, the Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District. Both of them are somewhat identical from the legislative standpoint. Permitting was referenced by the ED, that's really building permitting. It was inserted in the interlocal agreement to provide some oversight over construction, various improvements to the port, and although you think of it as water-active bulk adds, the port has a lot of buildings and other electrical, mechanical, which do need oversight, so that needs to stay in the agreement. The cannot expand north was obviously to preserve our taxing ability. The, we do have some court decisions to get people like Tropical back on the tax rolls in part, but the majority of the land area of the port still is non-taxable. So we are eight square miles of uplands in Riviera Beach, plus the three miles offshore, which we don't get any taxing from, but we need to preserve our land area, and the port is not as constrained as they, they seem to tout. Peanut Island is a revenue source that has not been used. Legislative updates, sure, let the lawyers come up with it. Ms. Nguyen knows the county well, so she can come up with good language for you. Cracker Boy, Jamco, I have represented them, and I would tell you that it is a very viable commercial, but you also have to recognize that if there was to be an acquisition, why wouldn't it be to the city's Marina versus the port? So don't drop that idea. Stormwater, do you want me to go, sir, or later on?
Thirty seconds.
For Stormwater?
Total, thirty seconds to finish.
For, for all three, then? Okay, Stormwater, I sat on the technical advisory board, and the port did not want to participate because they didn't think it was appropriate, because they had their permit, and I have handed out to our folks the important summary of the permit, and it is, gives the port responsibility. So I don't think that we need to come in with paying for things. The outfall, the southern one is a DOT outfall, so they need to talk to DOT. The northern one, my landlord for thirty years was in the field building it, and subsequently State Road 710 has provided a lot of water quality treatment to that particular massive area, as it pointed out. So, Peanut Island, guess what? The port is the owner of a major material management disposal area, which is in the project, the federal project, so I don't quite see any divestiture of that. The red area has the Coast Guard Station. Until we had a county commissioner or county administrator get on the port board, the station was going to be transported to Little Munyon, and it was going to become a Caps Restaurant up there within the village of North Palm Beach. Then all of a sudden, it was retained with a gift to an organization that was thrown out over Riviera Beach, and not, the landlord didn't take care of it, so now...
Mr. Ward, please wrap up.
Okay, the cost of, of the maintenance and restoration is really a port issue, because they deferred all the time, and you know how that goes with government. I could go on forever.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next, Mr. Victor Martinelli on item number one.
Next, Mr. Victor Martinelli on item number one.
Good evening, commissioners and council members. My name is Victor Martinelli, contact P.O. Box 3751, West Palm Beach, 33402. I'm the treasurer of Cracker Boy Boat Works, I'm also the treasurer of Jamco, Inc. I've been working for the Murphy family for thirty-five years. I'm one of the backroom people. You all know who I, I guess I'm here, because the person who normally would be here is no longer with us, but I would like to just point out that John Murphy's here with me, he asked me to actually speak, and I guess the point of our presence here is just to try to put an end to any speculation with respect to what the Murphy family's intentions are with respect to Cracker Boy Boat Works. It's a viable participant in the city of Riviera Beach, has been since 1976. We're proud of the facility, we're constantly looking to make improvements and changes and expand our operation in that area, and I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I guess, being the CFO, whatever number of titles I might want to carry, that if we didn't have a transition plan in place, I didn't deserve my paycheck. We do have one in place, and we're in the process of executing it right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, any final wrap-up comments?
Anybody have anything? I think we're good.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for dinner.